Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is a special meeting to hold a budget hearing of the City Council, of the City of Orange Township held in Council Chamber, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey on Thursday, June 13th, 2019 at 7:07 PM. Roll call. Councilwoman Eason here. Councilman Jackson?
Here.
Councilman Johnson Jr. is absent. Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Councilwoman Wooton is absent. Council President Coley is absent. Also President Joyce Leneer, the City Clerk. Madeline F. Smith, the Deputy City Clerk. Chris Hartwick, the Business Administrator. Gracia R. Montellis, the City Attorney. Megan O'Handlon, Assistant Budget Consultant. And Lisette Sanchez, Record Support Technician. Please stand for a moment of silence.
Can we recognize Clef Hannibal, teacher of Orange High School?
Thank you. The requirements of NJ SA 10:4-9 edsec, the Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Orange Transcript and printed on Friday, May 24th, 2019, and also to the Star Ledger, printed on Tuesday, May 29th, 2019, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the office of the City Clerk. Matters of discussion is the budget hearing, calendar year 2019. The first department is the Court. That's tab 11 in the budget binders. Council President Coley arrived at 7:17.
I made it.
You made it.
Just been a long day. Councilwoman, how you doing today?
Good, only 17 minutes late.
That's only because we actually started on.
Good, thank God for this day, I tell you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, Mr. Moss, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I put you as, I didn't want to interrupt before. I put you guys for waiting on yourselves, but you're waiting on me.
Yes.
Okay. Judge, how are you, sir?
Fine, please go.
You can start.
Wait for us?
Yeah.
Yeah. Before you guys start, do you guys have any opening remarks or comments you want to make?
Recording your budget?
We handed out packets here that highlights some of the accomplishments, of course, and some of the numbers as well. As you can see, we had another very busy, productive year. For record, Judge Michael Hackett, Chief Municipal Judge, and this is King Moss, my Court Administrator. Starting with the second page in the packet here shows a number of cases that were handled in the Court. 12,362, which 8,214 were adjudicated. If you go to the first six pages, first quarter, sorry.
Can you guys speak into the mic so we can hear you?
Sorry. Third page is the first quarter so far this year. We have a total of 3,026 cases scheduled, 2,623 adjudicated. The fourth page highlights some of the accomplishments of the Court. I'm not going to read them into the record, but look at those. We made an effort here to move the cases as long and as efficiently as possible and as well as giving everyone an opportunity to be heard in court, which is sometimes a challenge considering the volume that we have every day. We've also made efforts as well as far as getting money for equipment and services from POAA. And working also with the Administrative Officer of the Court, Judge Glenn Grant, as well. I'm going to let Mr. Moss talk a little more about that.
We were able to purchase needs for the Court through the POA money. That's money that has to be approved by Judge Grant and Judge Florida. They approved an amount of the, whatever we purchased, and it's a shortened amount to BA and the City would give us the other half. We were able to get an employee, we were able to get a safe, chairs. We were able to get a super updated video conference system. We also were able to get state-of-the-art language line. We have phones that we can use at the front window that we were able to get paid for. And we still have a few things that we're waiting for response.
As far as the language line goes, I believe we're the only Court, municipal Court in Essex County that has that system. We have a language line system at our payment window, where as anyone comes in, any language, basically, we have an interpreter we can reach by just making a phone call and make sure they get the services that they need. Either information on their court dates, or any amounts, or any help as far as payment of fines or penalties. So, that's been a big help as far as, usually we have, in the past, we've had to schedule them in court, then have an interpreter come in. But it may only mean, they may only want to know an amount to pay. But if you go through that and the cost of that, the City had to bear for that seemed to be unreasonable. Now we just have a language line and pay a flat fee for. So there's really no additional cost to the City. And also regarding the technology that we've had, we've had, as Mr. Moss said, we've redone the whole security system in the courthouse, the video. We have instantaneous video now playback. Anytime there's an emergency as well, all any employee has to do, or any judge has to do is push a button. It's time will take us to the quarters and videotapes anything that's going on either in the courtroom or in the common areas of the courthouse.
Councilmembers, any questions, comments for the Court?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you for your presentation, Judge Hackett. Working backwards, you just said about the cameras, and I was ordered yesterday. Are the signs supposed to make people aware of that?
The signs are being ordered.
Okay.
The signs were ordered, and when they came in, all three of the judges weren't happy with the way they were written.
With three lawyers, okay.
Yeah, and it, but as well as the Business Administrator, the Mayor.
Four lawyers.
And what we sent to DPW.
Five lawyers.
What we sent to DPW, known not to DPW, was not what...
What you sent was what you're not.
Right, and what I, what we did was, Councilwoman, we piggybacked off of the signs in the federal court.
Okay.
We piggybacked off the signs in the federal court. We got copies of them, and it just, I don't, between...
Okay, so you're working on it?
Yeah, 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 we're working on it, so the signs are coming.
And do we make a formal announcement just to let people know?
About the sign, about the...
That you're being recorded?
No, no one's being recorded. The recordings come when we push the button. We only record...
It's not ongoing, only as needed, okay.
That requires, to record, Court requires a permission and an order from the Court. It's not just pre-recorded.
In the courtroom, but not in the common, okay, all right.
The only question is an emergency.
No, no one can record, come in a courtroom, if you have a cellphone, you can't hold your cellphone in court. It requires permission from the Court, even for us to record.
And what about the common areas? Do you do the same for male say? Okay. So the language line, it's at the window, so if I come up and you don't have a bilingual, a multilingual person there, they can just go through and just, okay?
We are, we are working on getting a system that, like a PA system sort of. Right now, we just have a language line that we have to put the headphones through the slot, and they put them on and they listen.
Got you, okay.
Right now, we don't have a direct access right now. That's the only way we can do it right now because the courtroom wasn't designed for that.
Right.
To rewire and hardwire that in takes some time.
Right, okay. And then looking at your list of accomplishments, it seems that you're expanding more with community, particularly working with our young people. I know you didn't want to read over that, but can you just tell me, is the status quo, or did you do more this year with our young people in the school system and the community?
We've made an effort to, we'll make an effort every year to go out into the community. We do, I don't know how many career days and things like that, but we also made an effort to have students come in, intern with us. We have a number of high school students and middle school students come in every summer and even throughout the year. They sit with us and they get practical work. It's not just busy work or sitting around watching. They're actually doing some work and learning how the Court works, learning what the different roles are in Court. So we make sure that they, they have some kind of practical experience, something to take back to their school. And we write recommendation letters so we don't let them know. The schools know exactly what they're doing as well.
Okay.
And to piggyback on that, Councilwoman, which is very strange, we've gotten requests, and I named some of the colleges. This is new to me, but Judge Hackett wasn't the judge that had, we've had a college student come, and the professor came. So we've had, we've had one college student who comes, and the professor comes with...
Observation.
Right. Now it turns out that the professor is going for a higher level of education and wants to come in and help as well, to have to get permission from the Mayor and BA. But it's, we're getting a large amount of college students that are going on to the State website. I guess where we're located and how it needs to be handled is wrong, is wrong.
If you've come to the courthouse on any given day, you'll see at least one college student there.
Okay.
Someone interning.
Okay.
So we always have interns coming and going. We work around their schedule, so some of them have to go back to school for the summer. The ones that are here, we make sure they have some work to do. And a lot of the things that we do aren't on here because it's a lot.
Right.
We're always in the community.
Yep, got you. And I know previously, we had talked about persons that cannot pay their fines and kind of maybe doing community service. And I don't think we were able, ever able to get it off the ground for technical reasons. Are we working that?
We have a community service in place. We've found more defendants asking for it. We've also have something coming down from Judge Grant about how we are doing it. They're looking for more community service in State Court than the money part. So, so we're hoping at some point to be able to send to DPW a whole community service unit, all ages. A lot of people understand they, they're guilty and they just can't pay it. So, again, I just have one judge with me now, but our other two judges are going to fill that community service program up because we're following Judge Grant's order to not push, push for the money.
Courts are trying to move away from fines as a way of...
Courts as...
Not at all. The State.
Okay.
Can I interject just for a couple of minutes here? I don't want to interrupt the flow, you know, but I would like to keep us focused on the budget. And I would love to have you come back for a matter of discussion, and you guys can, you know, go back and, back and forth about all these other things.
Well, Council President, I'm reading from the accomplishments where he didn't go over, and I'm just asking.
Well, he said that he didn't want to read them into the record just to try and save some time, you know, so we could...
I'm asking questions about them.
And that's what I'm saying, we could, if we could just keep this moving.
Well, I think this is more of a budget process, Council President, and if it's not important to you as a sitting Councilperson, it's important to me because it does affect, it does affect our bottom line.
And that's why I recommend it for them to come back.
But we need to do it during the budget, we need to do it during the budget process, not during, because this is the time we make determinations of money for this department.
All right, Councilwoman, I hear you, you know, but I would like to keep things moving rather than just being...
And, and, and right now, I'm asking questions, and my question is, what may not be important to you is important to me.
They are very important, but what I'm trying to express, just so we can keep things moving.
Okay.
If we can just do that, have a matter of discussion for that.
And let me finish my discussion, my questions, please.
Well, two minutes.
Is it a budget question?
Yeah, is it a budget question?
I know we have four parts today.
And to be considered, to move forward.
Two minutes.
You were asking about community service.
And I don't need you to ask questions about me, I'm talking to Council President, and that's sufficient.
Listen, listen, listen.
To move forward, to...
Can we please do what you said and just, just talk about the budget items, or we can take a whole...
And these are budget items, Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Just do it quickly, please.
Okay, and no, it's not for you to say. And Council President, as a Council President, I would appreciate you taking charge of your meeting.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
And Council President, but this right here, this right...
I'm trying to be...
But Council President, let me finish, because this right here...
Time out, time out, time out, time out, time out, time out. Point of order, point of order. We trying to keep things, I'm trying to keep things as respectful and as orderly as I possibly can.
Right.
This is going to be a very long night. This is game six, NBA Finals. I want to watch a little bit of it, you know, I don't want to be here all night. You know, so this is why I'm, I'm begging, you know, these back and forth discussions that we're having now, that could be a matter of discussion, and we can have them however long you want, but right now, let's stick to the budget.
And I appreciate the discussion.
So right now, we're going to, we're going to move on to the budget items, please.
Okay, and before you, and I am, as I was moving forward, when I say take control of your meeting, my conversation, just a second, Council President, is with you and not with other Councilmembers, and that's what I'm pertaining, that's what I'm speaking of.
Okay, so right now, you have two more minutes, I said, two minutes.
And I don't know that we have a time here, but you know what? I'll let everybody else go and I'll come back.
Councilmembers, any other questions or comments regarding the opening statement of the municipal Court? Okay.
Now can I finish my question?
Two minutes, two minutes.
With that being said, you said that they were moving away from fines, and that we, and that's why you're going, you know, lost my, the community service. And the other parts of the Court, is that the same for, are our Courts separated? Like, do you have a Code Enforcement Day? And are those revenues and, are the revenues and things of that sort, because they're not reflected here? How is that moving along, so like, is there a day for that and so on and so forth?
We do have a Code Enforcement Day, Thursday.
And Thursday, okay. And, and the revenues and stuff and all of that, how is that moving forward?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, when a person comes in, in some cases, in most cases, I guess, it's supposed to be, you want them to go out and fix what was supposed to be fixed, if not, they're being fined. And so, if not, they don't, I can't think of the word right now, if they don't do what they're supposed to do in terms of the Code Enforcement, then they have to be fined. What is, is it more that people are fixing them or more fines?
Well, fines are intended to be punitive, so they're intended to punish people. So, there's not a move to eliminate fines.
And that's not my question, Judge. The question is, is that I have an opportunity to abate, and if I don't abate, I'm fined. And so, do we find out that we're correcting the problem, or there are more, or there are more... Are we abating more or fining more?
We're definitely abating more.
Okay.
Fines are the last option. They're always given, well, you have to speak more to Code Enforcement personnel, but they're always given an opportunity to abate. If they don't abate, then they issue a fine, is how it usually comes to the Court. Once it gets to the courthouse, you know, depending on how great the situation is, it could still get dismissed if they have a bad situation. If not, then we'll adjudicate them. They either have a trial, or they maybe offer a plea. You know, usually, as far as Code Enforcement goes, our Code Enforcement personnel are pretty on the ball. You know, they have their documents lined up, they have witnesses lined up. There's not a whole lot of defenses available. But if anyone wants to trial, they're entitled to a trial.
Okay.
Try it, but most of them resolve. We have very few Code Enforcement trials.
And last question, what's your staff members? And this will be probably one, Mr. Moss. Is the staff trained, are utilizing the training options that are before them?
We have every member of our staff in class, and we have every member of our staff, including myself, that will start class after the Fourth of July. And because of our relationship with the AOC, we're going to be, with the permission of the BA and the Mayor, we're going to host classes, we're going to have...
The State come, Orange will be a site for training.
Orange is going to be a site for training, so it's easy for me to sign up. But right now, we stand, every one of my staff is in class, and we're signed, and a few of us, including myself, will start and see caucus in this before April.
And as far, as far as the training goes as well, as you can see from the button, in our discussions with the BA, we increased the money back regarding the training fees, to make sure that people are able to get trained and not be cost prohibitive. So, we're making sure that everyone gets trained. Before, in the past, they've, we've had training available to them. We deliver with that, but they have to bear the fees themselves. Sometimes they didn't schedule classes because they couldn't afford to travel down to South Jersey or spend the night down there, or pay the fees for a class. So the money's back in the budget now to make sure that they can get this done and not have to worry about the costs.
All right, thank you. Let's move on. This is, what, tab number 11?
11.
11, right. This is page 167. Councilmembers, any questions, page 167?
Do you have vacancies, no vacancies?
No.
So you're at your, um... I don't know, is there's no need for increase in personnel?
Well, we're able to work with the staff that we have right now. Depending on what happens in the future, I mean, I know, but right now, we're at full capacity.
Okay.
Okay.
Council President, if I may?
Yes, Councilman Jackson.
Just the definition of acronym, POAA, what does that stand for?
Parking Offense Adjudication Act.
Thank you.
Okay, skip to page 169. Any questions, Councilmembers? 170?
On 169, the training is 2,500?
Say again?
I'm looking at the training. It's 2,500. So, Mr. Moss, is it not that the part for the staff, the training is not part of the AOC budget?
The training, the, the, the location is paid by the AOC, trainers are paid by the AOC. But I have a, I have an employee that has to go to training Tuesday and Wednesday in Delray. The AOC doesn't pay for gas, so they have eliminated...
Reimbursements for us to go.
Right, parking. So, so we go to the Essex County Court now, we don't reimburse parking. So I have an employee that has an eight o'clock class on a Monday and a Tuesday, and it's scheduled in Delray. We, they would have to burden, go back and forth.
Unless we do reimbursements, okay.
And also some classes that aren't paid by AOC, that are paid by the attendee, depending on where the class is, that may be relevant to their title or position.
That's changing a lot, too.
Yeah.
Where they're, where they're, it's the class is not offered on this, it's happening to the judges as well.
Wow, okay.
All right, page 170?
Council President, I have a quick question.
Yes, Councilwoman Eason?
Witness fees.
On page 170, bottom of page 170?
170.
On the, on the front of the packet that I gave you, where the Florida approves the budget...
It's a lot, it's a line item in their budget that has to be there, or the judge who has review authority over the budget won't approve it.
I left a blank, and I got a phone call from her, and she said, "You can put two pennies in there, but she will not approve without a number." I just came up with that number, Councilman. Keep her happy, keep the man here happy, Council, that's, that's, we don't pay witnesses, but without that, a number in there, she won't approve the budget.
We don't, but we do have the ability to, if that ever happens, we have never done it.
You can pay them $10, man.
Plus fees.
And printing and binding, is that for the ticket books?
Ticket books, the notes, the notes you get in the mail from the Court.
Oh, okay.
We have to purchase the notes that we get in the mail from the Court, but we, actually, I'm going to go through a reading with Judge Grant and be able to... We're going to start to have, they're working on having, when you push the button, and the notes will be sent from the Bay of City. So we won't, we won't have to buy notices anymore.
They're going to move to a completely different notification system.
This includes the e-tickets and all that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes, Councilman Jackson.
Just describe the professional and contractual services. Professional services and contractors.
That's our visiting judges, and that's our interpreter service. Councilman, we, we're, city's growing, and non-English speaking defendants are growing.
Yes.
The, the...
The number of them is growing.
The number of them is growing. So, our interpreter sessions have to grow. Our, the languages that we have to go out that are exotic are growing. And there's times where unfortunately, our judges are scheduled in classes or training, and I have to get a judge from somewhere else to help me out. So that's where that might be.
As far as interpreters go as well, we have to have a live interpreter in Court for trial. We can't do it by phone or language line. You have to have an interpreter present in Court, that's by Court rule. So, depending on what, what language it is, we may have five trials scheduled one day. Maybe one Spanish, one Creole, one French, one Chinese. It means you have to have five interpreters there.
We get an sign language, which is trying to become an exotic.
Sign language.
Sign language, like I told you, be, sign language defendant who spoke Spanish. So it has to be a signer that spoke Spanish.
Wow.
The victim.
Yes, yes.
So we had to provide that for them.
And on occasion, a trial may involve three different languages, so you have three different interpreters interpreting the same sentence. So it gets a little complicated sometimes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Do you have, do you keep a list of languages that we have had to provide assistance for in our Court?
It's the email that we send to the interpreter.
No, no, do you, so by the end of the year, do you know all the list of languages that we have?
Yes, I had, it's just the email, I have to go back and pull them out.
Can you send it to the clerk so we can just see all the languages that we are, that are coming to our courtroom? And then going back to the notices, are you referring to the notices that go out?
Have you ever got a notice from the Court and the Mayor?
That's what I'm saying, that's what you're referring, so, and it's going to come from the AOC now?
Ultimately, that's the AOC's goal, push, their goal.
Okay.
We are, we're not involved in that process.
So, if it comes out from the AOC, will we still, so that we won't be providing postage for that anymore?
We wouldn't provide postage for the ATS, ACS notices, but we still have a large number of notices that we have to hand type. Some notices are just... Some notices just, you can't, the system's not built to do it. So, we, those would be regular, email, the mail.
No, no, I got you, but I'm saying, but if they're gonna take over a, a portion.
The postage will go down.
Yeah, the postage, and, and when is that initiative, the, when are they forecasting that initiative for?
They just announced it, that, that they were working on that.
About two months ago.
So, it won't be a 2019 realization?
And then there's a process, too, you know, first there's a committee, and, and Chris may know, there's a committee, I think then Judge Grant has to present it, and then he has to, it's a, it's a, it's a process, but it's one that, that, there hasn't been any negative perspective about it.
I'm just saying, it's not gonna be a realization in our 2019 budget, it seems like.
No.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
And one thing, they haven't discussed how they're gonna finance it either, so I don't know if they'll tack on a fee or, or not. So, it may not alleviate the city, or probably will not alleviate the city altogether. And now that the AOC is gonna take on that whole expense, that's, that's a big item for every town in the state, and they're not gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel members' comments? Any closing remarks, um, Judge and Mr. Moss?
Uh, we appreciate you having us here, and we're always available for further comment, if anyone has any questions.
I do, I do have this, um, Counsel, um, with the BA expression, I'll leave here. We, we went to a training program, and, um, Judge, a couple of Judge Frask and Judge Fras, these are jobs throughout the state. Um, we get about ten to fifteen people a day come up to the court with their resume. These are state jobs that, um, I was asked to put out in the hallway, and Judge, um, attacked and said, "Okay." I'm gonna leave some here. Um, if anyone knows, um, usually the court doesn't supply or help people with, um, employment, but these are state jobs, not just orange, not just Essex County. Um, and if this, with counsel permission, I'll make copies for every member. But these are state jobs that, and we're on, Orange is down the email trail. We get these, um, monthly, um, that I'll leave, um, at the clerk's office. And if you guys approach by anybody that wants to work at the court, um, this will be available.
And for approval, and that's the same website, judiciary.state nj, that they can go to themselves? That's the judiciary?
So, I just get it as an email. I get it as an email, and, and when you try to describe it to them, they're like, "Please make me copy."
Okay, if you can just leave it with the clerk's office, we appreciate it. Okay. Um, we're gonna ask you to stick around for a few minutes. Um, we have the CBAC representative that wanna come up?
Uh, Counsel President?
You can come into the mic, you can come right here, just dial right here.
I'm going to ask.
You gotta come to the mic.
While I confer with my fellow, uh, committee members.
Okay, I give a minute.
And while he's conferring, if I can?
Yes, sir.
Just extend my thanks, uh, and, you know, warm respect to the gentleman who rep, here representing our court. You know, not only, you show, you're, you're the epitome of commitment, you know, and, um, the hard work you put in not only serves the citizens, but it, it brings bright light to shine on our town. And, and certainly, um, you know, I appreciate that, you know, that, that, that's one of the things that people can look at Orange as a place of quality, is our municipal court. And I appreciate you and your staff doing that for us.
Thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome.
And I have something, this is not with the budget, um, but if you can just get, um, all, like a dollar amount, um, for all our outstanding, uh, I guess warrants that we have, outstanding warrants? Are you able to sum it up and maybe, and just give that number to the, um, like a little summary to the clerk's office, I guess when, whenever you can?
Well, I want to just help, when you say a dollar amount, um, well, the count, no, but, but, to be the reminder, Judge Gloria has changed bench warrants. So, if it's, if it's five hundred or less, they just bring them in and give them court there. So, then, that, that's a hard number to give, because a lot of bench warrants are, they're not, they're not only five hundred.
Just do your best, whatever the rest.
And didn't they also, uh, direct the dismissal of a bunch of old outstanding cases?
Close to a new day.
And didn't that also do away with a lot of the backed-up bench warrants?
Close to a new day.
Thanks.
Okay.
The number, the number that it gives you really doesn't have much meaning, because, um, yeah, the, the way the court changes is how we, we.
Okay.
Present bench warrants. Any bench warrant under six hundred dollars, the person's not five hundred, but they can't even, uh, they're not even gonna hold them. It's just a number to the court, it's just a number, I guess, sort of to scare.
And there's, and there's no bail system anymore, so you're detained or you're released.
Okay.
It's a number I can kind of play around with.
Okay, all right, thank you. CBAC?
Uh, thank you, Counsel President. Douglas Burris appearing for the, uh, CBAC. And I have just a couple of questions for.
You can, um, sit back, the mic picks up, the, yeah, you don't have to speak directly into it. There you go.
How's this?
Better.
Thank you. I don't really need a microphone.
Well, for recording purposes, uh, you don't.
Okay. Uh, could you just elaborate on the employee training, uh, what this is used for, and who goes for the training?
Every staff member can go to employee training, as well as the judges. Um, they're, they're, they're called harm, uh, municipal court. So, it's, 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 municipal court's changing every day. So, there's a level one, then there's level two, level three, level four. It just brings you all the way up to an administrator role. I started at the level one, made it all the way through the level. Those classes are given by the state. They are incredible, um, because courts are different, and it, something in court's changing right now for speed. So, those are those classes. And then they provide free professional standard classes. So, it could be mental health in the court, it could be know, know your books. Um, we have one about handicapping languages. Um, so, when you go on the site, there's a wide array of classes. The one problem that we would have with, they used to always just be in trip. So, you know, we made a little noise, the DA made a little noise, so now they're a little closer than North Sea Courts, we're even gonna start to have them in our court. So, there'll be a day, actually a week, when you just, we have two court rules. One would just be strictly for class, which benefits my staff, because they can just walk right in and have the class. The classes are incredible. Um, they, the, the judges get them, the AOC has provided them free. But now some of them are starting to be, you know, charged. They used to provide gas and parking and lunch, all that's been taken away. So, so, I'm not gonna ever stop my staff from getting, and you get CECs, which are credits.
Right.
You get, you get credits, and which you can provide, and which can help you to go work at another court, or to rise up through your title. So, we, we appreciate them, because in other states, you have to pay for that, all those classes, you yourself. So, that's what those classes are for. Um, they're only for court staff, so they benefit your field of employment.
Do you also have a baby judge school for new judges coming into the court?
They have, yes. They, they do that, in trip.
As run by administrative officers of the courts. All judges have to go through what they call baby judge school.
Oh, right.
A week intensive training, well, it depends on how they, they, they change the program a lot, so it depends on how long. Sometimes it's, it's a week straight, sometimes it's a few days, a month. But all judges, per your court, and, and, of course, exactly.
Okay, on page one sixty-seven, about two-thirds of the way down, the court aid is paid for by the POAA budget, says all trust fund. Can you describe that and tell me how much money we're talking about there?
So, we, we, we wrote up to the AOC to ask them for an additional employee to help with parking ticket forms. Parking ticket filing, parking ticket receiving, parking tickets. We write it up, eleven to Judge Gloria. It's, it's ten dollars an hour, not to seat twenty hours. Um, an employee is strictly dealing with parking matters. We, we wrote it up, Judge Gloria, for the last three years has approved, and pays nothing. The, the county pays this young lady's salary. It's ten dollars an hour, doesn't seat twenty hours, and, and she works. She, she can go to the classes, she can work in court, she can work for window. I say she, this is a female at the time. That's something that we really put, it's an extra body, that we don't have to bother anyone to call for payments. Ten dollars an hour, doesn't seat twenty. And when it's two months up, we bother Judge Gloria again, but we just wanted to, that, that kind of body to help us out.
Thank you very much. That's all from the CBAC. Counsel President?
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel President.
Counsel President?
Yes, Counselwoman Eason?
I just wanna say thank you. Great professional jobs that you do.
Thank you, Counsel. See you next year.
All right.
We'll see you, gentlemen.
Of course.
We're gonna go watch the game.
Oh, literally.
How are you?
I'm good.
I'm trying, okay. We're moving on to tab five. You got a handout, sir?
Hmm?
We got a handout?
I do not.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Counsel President, how are you?
Awesome.
Great.
Feeling like a superstar today.
Yes, sir.
Um, you have an opening statement?
I am gonna waive my opening statement, Counsel President, and, uh, good evening, counsel members. I'm waiving the opening statement, not because I wanna watch game six, which I do.
Well, we're gonna watch it tonight, one way or another. A hook about crook.
But, uh, so I am gonna waive an opening statement. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, um, avail myself to all counsel members to answer any or questions that I can. I think the one statement that I will make, um, and I certainly appreciate, uh, and applaud the, the presentation made by the, uh, the court, the court system. I think that one of the things that I wanna highlight is that the, um, law department, uh, certainly, um, is here and services every and all, and every, and all departments in its city hall, which is reflected, uh, in our budget, um, requests our budget proposal, so we don't have necessarily any outward programs that we can, um, present to the court in terms of, uh, community outreach, et cetera. Um, but are certainly what, what we do is support every single department that, uh, uh, is within the auspice of the city. Um, and therefore, again, like I said, it's reflected in our budget, which is why, uh, I'm here to answer any questions pertaining to our proposed budget.
Okay. Let's get to it.
So, before you, um, Counsel President, before you start, are there any, um, that you can, are there any new employees, that you could just say, you know, anything new, different? Is it addition to the staff? Does the staff remain the same?
No, we actually, and thank you, Counselwoman, um, Williams, we actually added two new attorneys to our, um, office. Uh, and, um, they have, what, the main reason that we did this is to be able to actually handle more cases on an in-house basis, which, um, obviously would, uh, help save, uh, on, uh, the legal costs that we've, that we've incurred in the past. Um, so, with respect to litigation cases, as well as our work comp, um, caseload, uh, we've assigned, or I've assigned to the two new attorneys that have joined our staff.
And what specialty do they bring?
The one attorney brings a work comp experience, as well as general litigation experience, um, from prior, from prior offices. He's, uh, he's, and he also brings, um, municipal prosecutorial, um, expertise as well, to the extent that, um, we need, uh, any assistance with respect to our municipal courts, um, as well as, again, outside legal services. Um, the other attorney I've assigned to, um, legislative research or legal research with respect to, um, any cases that, um, again, need the, um, either, uh, brief writing or, uh, motions for summary judgment, where we're, where we're going to, uh, request that we, um, have a quick resolution when there's virtually no liability, uh, on the part of the city. Um, and he's also a, assigned to, uh, tax, tax matters.
So, the second one is a tax specialist, and did I use?
Work comp.
No, the first one was work comp.
The first one was work comp, as well as litigation.
Right, and then the second one?
Second one is tax, as well as litigation.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, um, counsel members, before we get to it? Page seventy-one, any questions, comments?
And the new attorneys, Counsel President, that are listed here, are they, they're, um, thirty-five hour?
They are full-time, yes.
Okay.
Both of them are full-time.
Okay. And so, do, we don't have labor, and so all labor has to go, um, to outside counsel?
All labor currently goes to outside counsel. Now, one of the things that we, that, um, we are focused on doing is to at least handle the minor labor stuff. Um, and we'll define what that minor, uh, labor stuff is within our office, but again, our hope is to, um, be able to at least handle, because I, all of our attorneys have some level of, uh, experience, even minimal, um, with, uh, labor issues. So, we're able to at least, um, do the minimal stuff, as opposed to sending everything outside. And this is something I've also discussed, um, with our business administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on page, uh, seventy-one? Page seventy-three.
Counsel President?
Yes, Counselwoman Jackson?
And just for clarification, I see at the bottom of the page for two hundred, two thousand dollars for the settlements, that, that's a part of the arrangement where we agree that you can make settlements, uh, up to a certain amount without coming back to the council? That's correct, and I actually did, in fact, review that in ordinance today, as a matter of fact. Yes. To, to at least be, be more specific, or at least be more knowledgeable with respect to what my, uh, limit or my range is with, for settlements. Yeah, that's very good. Um, I, I see that it is a certain amount of, of fifty thousand more than was, uh, appropriated for last year. Is there an expectation that more settlements, could you have some more in the chamber, or I guess that are on the way, or something? Well, there, there's, there's an increase in cases, and so therefore, there's, there's an increase in the, in the expectation, if you will, of settlements. Um, trying to at least resolve cases, uh, quickly, quickly. Yes. Getting them, uh, resolved and getting them out of the office, to the extent that, um, we can, in fact, uh, recognize that there are issues that, um, that, uh, would necessitate a quick resolution, so. But there's been an influx, uh, arising cases, if you will, which, again, necessitates the increase in that budget amount. All right. Thank you, Mr. Montillas. Yes, sir.
Counsel President?
Yes, Counselwoman Williams?
On page seventy-three, um, you're not asking any for training, and this is the second year you didn't. I'm sorry, everybody have a revised one? Just, so the training? Okay, so we have to. Travel allowance was transferred to training. Okay, so we have to, we should be using new pages. The only thing on their budget that changed was travel and training. They just switched. So, employee training, uh, so I have two, I have assistant count, um, the, assistant city council.
Well, even if you don't have the change.
Uh-huh.
If you look on page seventy-four, you'll see an entry for travel allowance, thirty-six hundred dollars. That has been moved, uh, after discussion with the department to employee training.
So, we're asking for thirty-six hundred?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be my question, okay. And then, to follow up on what Counselwoman Jackson stated, that, um, for the tru, uh, for the settlements, following two twenty-seven and seventeen, spent one thirty-one, asked for one fifty-two, you spent eighty. Now you're going back up to two hundred thousand again. So, my first question, is this an account that could, um, become a trust with the money that's not spent?
You could reserve it at the end of the year.
But it's not a trust, but you.
But it's not a trust. But he, here's what you need to remember.
Mm-hmm.
The numbers that you see there are just the numbers that were charged to the line. The numbers that you see there are just the numbers that were charged to the line.
Right.
Right, we had settlements and/or judgments far in excess of these numbers, if you recall.
Right.
Right, so, um...
And just explain that, because we had to pay some, someone to insurance?
Yeah, some of it, some of it went to, was, was paid by insurance, some of it we had to do through emergency appropriations, not because we didn't have the money, but because there is, there, there are cap strategies associated with doing emergency appropriations. So, it's also very difficult to budget, right, in an open process like this, for settlement numbers without tipping off plaintiff's attorneys?
Right.
That there's seven hundred thousand dollars sitting in an account that they can settle cases on.
And, and a reserve may give them that opinion?
A reserve would give them that information.
That opinion, and going back to this, just to give more information as to, Councilman Jackson referred to an ordinance that we did that allows you to settle without coming before counsel, what is that amount?
My, that amount is fifty thousand.
Okay, just so it's before the public, so you can settle up to fifty thousand?
Up to fifty thousand without counsel, prior counsel authorization.
Okay.
But then you have to come back and report, right?
Correct.
Thank you, Council President.
You're quite welcome, Councilwoman. Any other questions, Council members?
Seventy-four, we got seventy-four, Council President?
Yes, sir.
I just had a question about the foreclosures, I see that the, you're asking for fifteen thousand at the top of seventy-four, and twenty-fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, nothing was spent.
So I'm gonna answer this one?
Yes.
Because I just gave them a list of foreclosures that I want filed on properties that have municipal liens on them, and there's about forty-seven properties.
So now that we've changed our processes, that money will be?
That money will be spent.
Wonderful, thank you.
Probably in filing fees.
All right.
As well as title searches, yes.
Right.
And going back, it just be a reserve account, so, so we can?
That's, that's a tougher one.
Mm-hmm.
I think that, uh, what I, what I like the idea of is, if we can work out with the cap issues, a steady two hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation into legal settlements, and then reserve them by year, it'll be more difficult for people, plaintiff's attorneys, to follow that process.
So if you have these cases, you anticipate it's worth this amount?
And then you can build up a reserve, which you're supposed to have under your insurance policies, anyway.
Okay.
Any other questions on page seventy-four, Council members?
And, I'm just, um, Council President, we just talked about Labor Council, and under, okay, because it's just under professional services, where it says Emergency Labor Council, this time it's just under all professional services?
Correct.
Okay.
And we should also point out that, I think in two thousand eighteen, it wasn't seventeen, we changed the process within the Law Department, so we're now very much on top of cases, cases assigned to outside lawyers under our PE GIF policy, and notification of the GIF that they have to cover the legal expenses, and the bills are processed through the GIF. So, we're making sure that we're getting the benefit of those policies.
And Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Contractual, do I see contractual here?
Professional services?
No contractual, I'm looking for, you know contractual under here, and I ask that because, Mr. Hartwick, we had talked about, um, and Mr. Montellus as well, we had talked about software for scheduling, and, you know, had that software been considered, and if so, are we gonna consider it in this budget, and is it being accounted for?
So, we probably won't get to an expenditure in this year's budget, but I do think we'll get through the process of determining what the best scheduling software and taking proposals and checking the state contracts list, it's on the list of things that I've given the IT person to do, because I've tried to push all software to IT to make sure that it's compatible with everything else that we're using.
Oh, and, and because there are such things in the ALC already, that we don't have to reinvent, and it goes for scheduling, count, um, calendaring and all of that, and that's all in that consideration, okay.
Okay, Council members? Mr. City Attorney, any closing comments?
Just, just this, I, I certainly want to thank the Council and, and also the business administrator, we, we've, we've done a lot within the Law Department within the last few months in terms of, and I think this would probably be best, best served during a regular council meeting or a, or a closed session with respect to reporting on various matters of litigation, but I think that we've done, we've taken a, a lot of steps towards ensuring that, not only as the BA alluded to earlier, that we have a, a system of checks and balances, or at least a better system of checks and balances now, we're, we're certainly more accountable with respect to the cases that we have, all of the cases that we have in our office.
Right.
We certainly, I certainly, as, as the City Attorney, I want to thank the Council, as well as the business administrator, for giving me the resources that I, that my department and my office needs in, in making sure that we are successful in overseeing our cases. We've had some case, some successful matters, and by way of summary judgment, settlements, resolutions, again, I think a better forum would be at a council meeting or closed session to, to report to the Council, but in terms of being on top of those cases, we've made significant strides.
Okay.
I'd like to thank our office for that, as well as everyone here for giving me the means to make sure that that happens.
All right. CBAC, any questions?
Council President?
Hold on, Councilman Eason? Yes?
It would have been nice, though, since you have changed the faces of the Law Department, that you would have had the new ones here tonight, so we could see what they look like and at least meet them, I mean, you're sitting there alone, they could have came just to see what the budget was all about, so maybe at some point in the future, as you bring on new attorneys, that you just let us meet them, so we know who's representing our city.
Will do, Councilman, I can tell you that one of the new attorneys, his wife is actually expecting, so he's home, they had a doctor's appointment this afternoon, so he couldn't make it tonight, and the other attorney, the younger attorney, actually went home a little early, not feeling well, but I understand.
I'm not feeling well, and I'm here.
I'm not feeling well, but I understand the concern, I, I'll make sure that they come, they come greet the Council at the next meeting, at the next available opportunity.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
CBAC?
One moment, sir.
Yeah, sure, 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 sure.
What are they waiting, um, or, or, there wasn't a great increase, oh, one of the dues in publication, is there something new, because that's almost a two thousand dollar increase?
Yeah, so what that is, and what, what we're expecting that, or using that for, is Lexus, is our, is our research software, so that's our Lexus Nexus?
Yeah, to get broader, okay.
Yes.
If I can just add my little two cents?
Absolutely, Councilman.
While we're waiting, real quickly, I, I just appreciate the way, you know, it's another advantage we have of having attorney as a business administrator, I appreciate the way you guys collaborate, and making our court, our, our Law Department more efficient is, you know, it's gonna help us move through any litigation and avoid some litigation as well, and to serve the citizens much better, so I appreciate the way you guys collaborate, it's very efficient.
Thank you.
CBAC?
Thank you, Council President.
Yes, sir.
On the line for dues and publications, five thousand sixty dollars, can you tell me just what that goes for?
Yes, so, again, just to reiterate my response to Councilwoman Williams, the majority of that goes to our legal research software, or the legal research service, I should say, which is Lexus Nexus, which is what we use.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, can you tell me what a law court order emergency is? I see it was, you spent a good deal of money on it before, but it's zeroed out this year.
It's a judgment.
The one hundred and thirty that we used in two thousand seventeen was, was the result of a judgment.
I see.
And we don't have that at this point.
Mm-hmm.
So we, right, so there was no request for it.
All right, and as far as the Emergency Labor Council?
Mm-hmm.
I see that's been zeroed out.
Right, so again, that was discussed before, so that was put into professional services on that line item.
So, in the year that you see it added, which was two thousand eighteen, there was not enough money budgeted for counsel, the Labor Council expenses exceeded the appropriation, so to cover the appropriation prior, so that it didn't carry over and become an unfunded appropriation, we did an emergency appropriation for the hundred thousand we needed to cover the Labor Council for two thousand eighteen.
But we don't see that recurring this year.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
And it was actually litigation that year, too, you had?
Yeah, there was, there was a couple litigations and arbitration that the Labor Council was handling for us.
Thank you. Are you hiring an IT person?
Better not.
Not to my knowledge.
No IT person.
So, Chris Kutchik's Mountain, you have a city?
So the city has an IT person, and that person provides IT services across all departments, which is why we're consolidating all of the software acquisitions under IT.
Council President, that is all from the CBAC on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Council President, thank you all, Council members.
Yes.
All right.
You going back over there, sir?
Absolutely. You know I want to dip out.
We're now going to tab two. Tab two. So we have clerks for the, we got substitutions for the clerk and the city council?
Yes.
Okay.
And administration.
And the administration, is that this one? Now that's city council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. BA, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
You have a, an opening statement regarding this county year budget, sir?
This year, we have continued the process that was started almost two years ago of consolidating within Administrative Services those functions that, over many years prior, had been dished off to other departments. So, um, some of the increase that you see in the dollar lines is attributable directly to that consolidation, one of the lines in particular has to do with, I believe it's professional services, and, yeah.
Where are you looking at, where are you speaking from, Mr. BA?
So, I, I'm just highlighting some of the changes.
Okay.
Professional services under admin, we've appropriated last year, two hundred and forty-three, this year, two hundred and forty-four, that's an increase from the prior year of forty thousand seven hundred dollars, and that's the line where most of the consolidation has taken place. And what's represented in that line includes a medical services contract that we use to screen potential hires in police, fire, public works, that medical service contract also works with our third-party administrator on all workers' comp cases, and so we have consolidated all of those medical services into one contract. In addition, when you look at the salary lines in Administrative Services, you will see the analyst grant application, program monitor, director of community service, some of you were looking for that salary when the community service people were presenting that question came up, the reason it's in here is because the bulk of the salary is in the program monitor and grant application analyst position, and the balance is in a stipend for the community service supervision. There's a vacancy, it's unfunded, we're going to, at some point, revamp the procurement process based upon not just best practices, but also consultation with the State Office of Compliance in the AEOC, or the EEO for the state, and we have some work to do there.
What page are you on?
Right now, I'm on, I'm just highlighting, but the salary page I was referring to is page five. So, those are the highlights of, of the changes, but I'll be happy to answer any questions or go through, as we go through.
Okay, um, was this tab number two, page one? Council members, any questions, comments?
Um, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Mr. Hartwick, I know that, um, that the admin clerk, the stipend has been split under Administrative Services, we never complete, we never completed, completed the reorg.
Correct.
And with that, pretty much, the personnel and everything kind of comes out of the BA's office, in, in the way that we're structured right now, and then that stipend would be shown right here, because everything would be under the VA, or either, it could be broken down, but we're still, I guess, are we still just assessing, because I know we're supposed to assess the actual need or bringing it back the way it was, or what are we doing?
So, um, the answer to your question is really two-part.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I have to be given direction from the mayor to present the reorg, and I have recently had to go back to the reorg that I had originally presented and make some modifications. But also, if you look on page five, you'll see the second half of that, of that salary.
Right.
So I am accounting for it in the correct department, because under the code, the city code, personnel comes under Administrative Services.
Okay.
So even if there were a, a director, or an HR person, that would still come under Admin Services.
Okay.
So I've just split the salary in two different places, one in my office, where she does the bulk of her work, and the other in Administrative Services, because that particular person does all the civil service compliance.
Which is an HR function, okay, got you, you go.
Any other questions on, Council members? Okay. Page three?
Just for the dues and publication, you're asking for the money that you have, that it appears to have not been spent since two thousand fourteen.
That's correct, I pay for my own dues.
So, but do we need to fund it then?
I believe that I keep that three sixty in there, simply because at certain points there might be opportunities for the admin clerk, who's also on the personnel side, to do something with civil service.
Okay.
For the record, Councilwoman Wooton arrived at eight twenty-three.
Good evening.
Any other questions on page three, Council members? Page four?
And, same question, Mr. Hartwick, regarding advertising?
And same question, Mr. Hartwick, regarding advertising?
We consolidated all of the advertising budget, I believe, under Contractual Services?
Under this department?
I think so, let me just look real quick.
And so, and should we remove this 500?
Okay, it's, it's under Advertising on page eight.
So, should we remove this 500?
I would actually just take the 500 and put it under Advertising.
Right, so just remove it from here and put it over there.
Any other questions on page four? Page five?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Easton?
Question, do you do business administrative, so for City Hall itself, we have a full-time security?
We do.
So, and the hours are?
They start at eight, and they stay until five, and they get an hour for lunch.
So on the days that I come here, there's nobody at that desk?
There are other, they should either be in the parking lot or in front of the building. They do have responsibilities to check the lot, so if they're not in either of those places, as a good council person, you should mention that to the BA.
I will. The other question I have, in light of what happened, just happened at Virginia Beach, do we ever plan to have a more secure system at their front door, like, maybe a better detective, warning, or something, or you don't think we need it?
Um, no, I wouldn't go there. I've been in discussions about this for six months, and I believe that we're going to make some changes with regard to accessibility to the building.
I think we need to, and I'll just go back to my original question, because a lot of times I come here, the door's open and there's nobody in sight, so I'm wondering, is that safe for employees?
The hard-cold reality in today's environment is that government buildings are targets, so we're going to harden the target by changing the security protocol for the building.
Shouldn't that also apply to our, I probably should ask our police department, the entrance and exit?
We have a plan to address the security issue at the police department. We've been working with the court. What we don't like, and what the court, and by court, I mean the Superior Court, Assignment Judge's Office, and AOC, they do not like the fact that the screening for the municipal court is actually on the second floor of the building, which effectively means that everybody's in the building before they're screened. So, we have done some research on the cost to convert shipping containers, to add a interior tunnel to the front atrium of the building, because there's no room inside the lobby of the current structure to put an adequate security screening center. So we have to do an extension of the front of the building, and that's probably going to come to you in the capital budget and ordinance that I present to you in July. The most effective, cost-effective means, without pouring a ton of money into that building while we're studying the facility needs of all the buildings, is to go with the converted shipping container option, because it gives you plenty of queuing space.
Okay. And you said the security guards' hours are what now?
Starts at eight, and we have coverage till five. And then if we have, if we have meetings in the building, one of those two people is usually here, at the door, for which they get paid overtime.
Just another quick, so how soon do you envision that? Because if you go to Newark or East Orange, you can't get in those buildings without going through a metal detector.
So we have a temporary plan to address the security issue, particularly at the police building and the court building, while we build out the, the converted shipping container plan. And it, it will be somewhat of an inconvenience to the people who are going to the court, because they're going to have to queue up outside the building, but that's the only option that we have.
Because safety comes first.
Correct.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Can we just note that we do an executive session just to update on security and just have an executive session on security matters in the city of Orange?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Wooton?
So, is there any protocol for an active shooter? Like, do we have anything?
There is.
In the future, for like, training for?
Well, we, we have done training for employees since I've been here, but I believe that the training needs to be repeated on a more regular basis.
Okay.
The PEGIF offers that particular training for free, and they will come out to all members and do it a minimum of twice a year. And we do have written plans that have been approved and are part of our OEM protocols.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on page five?
Out, I see a new position is out, go ahead, wait here, okay.
This is regarding page five?
New position is, how long has that position been in effect?
Started approximately two months ago, and it was put in that way, as a placeholder, while they trained on the payroll system and health benefits, because that person who used to do that has left.
And that, so all this goes to, my first question, when we was on the first page?
On the reorg.
Because we're expanding a department that's not properly approved, and I'm just, and it's just maybe a matter of note, but I just want to be, you know, that either we're going to do it, or we're not going to do it, you know?
Actually, just-
I mean, we're doing it, but to do it properly.
Well, to be clear, right, I think what wasn't done properly was the designation of someone as an HR director, because you can't be a director if you don't have a department. But the way it's set up currently, even with this addition, it falls under Administrative Services, which if you look at the municipal code of the organization as it appears now, this is where it belongs.
Okay.
What you don't see here is, if you look further up to the fourth position down, that's a placeholder, because we've had to keep that person on part-time, so that we could transition payroll services and pension contribution and, and compliance. And that person not only has continued to help us with that, but has also helped us with the training of the new employee.
Okay.
And we've brought Prime Point in to do training to other employees.
And you've mentioned in your summary that you have a different vision for procurement, and right now, we give a stipend, so with that money, there would no longer be a stipend and, and remove and just to a purchasing agent, all of that will come under?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, if, if we're going to do this right, and have the QPA be responsible not only for RFPs, RFQs, evaluations of proposals, bid specifications, as well as EEO compliance, which is what most QPAs do, then we have to set it up, given the amount of contracting that we do, we have to set it up as a, as a position in and of itself.
And we haven't had a purchasing agency since the last person retired, probably, right?
Full-time, right.
Yes, mm-hmm, okay. And so are you envisioning that for 2020 then, because there's nothing?
I hope so.
Okay, because you don't have any money allocated, okay, gotcha.
Right. Any other, yeah, Councilwoman Easton?
Just one little quick question, what is the difference between a network administrator and a media technician one?
A media technician one is the person who helps with our cameras, our broadcasting, and audiovisual equipment may help us in a pinch with recording events, meetings, forums, covering city events that we want to put up on the website or on Channel 35. The network administrator is in charge of the entire computer network for the city, and this is a pivotal position. To give you an idea, the IT department in East Orange has 16 employees. East Orange is twice our size, we have one IT person. So, West Orange has three IT people. So, we're operating bare bones, but as we build out the network, and we bring in online payments, and we rebuild the website, and we add a second channel, that position becomes, he's already overburdened, just in responding to day-to-day emergencies from departments.
Are they both full-time jobs, right?
No. The media technician is an hourly, and that's how I budget the time.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Johnson?
BA Chris, can you compare us to a town maybe around the same size as us? How many do you have?
Okay, well, I'm trying to think of one where I know the numbers. I can tell you that they're, they're a smaller town.
Same size, maybe?
Like South Orange, which basically is 17,000, they have two IT people.
Okay.
So it's an area that we, we're going to need to address on a going-forward basis.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman?
I believe, Mr. Hartwick, that you stated that you were going to get us a copy of the grant report, do we, we still have a grant consultant?
Yeah, we get a monthly report from the consultant.
Okay, we, we've been asked, and, and I think we get it, and it's not-
Pretty sure that it was forwarded to the clerk's office.
Okay, do we have the grant report?
I don't remember a grant report.
Okay, and then with the in-house person, does, can we get a report on applied versus received?
Sure.
Okay.
We just received another million dollars for Safe Roots that we applied for last year, and we're probably going to get over a million dollars, based on my conversations, in additional DOT grants.
And Mr. Hartwick, is the census going to come out of your department as well?
Yeah.
And that will be allocated, is there funding that's going to be in a bunch?
We're going to use the first person on that list as the coordinator.
Okay. And, but are there funds that have come in for the census, for coordination and all?
Yeah.
And we don't, do you have a dollar amount yet?
I don't.
Okay.
Any other questions on page five? Let's get to page seven.
And this is the page that's supplemented?
Any questions, page seven?
Council President, do, Mr. Hartwick, so you gave us a, a new sheet tonight?
Correct.
That was ran, is there?
There are no changes on page seven, but when you flip the page to page eight, if you scroll down to Admin, Professional Services, the 244 number has gone up to 294, and that $50,000 increase was taken from other departments' budgets. And what that accounts for, so everybody knows, is we had the Concentra contract, which we approved in 2018, it was a two-year contract, but we didn't account in the dollars for the mid-year medical exams that we're going to need for any new hires for fire and police. So, or crossing guards. So, I needed to supplement that, and I have a summary sheet of where we took the money from.
Oh, this is the sheet that you?
Right. So I took 40 from police, which had originally been in their budget for Concentra, and then we switched it to another line, and I took 10 from DPW. And it's six and one half dozen the other, the 40 from police would have gone to pay for this anyway, I just wanted it in the right place.
And the 10 from DPW would have been to pay for?
Yeah.
New hires as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Or workers' comp cases, or something.
Any other questions on page eight? Page nine? By May? Yes, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Hartwick, does the control total increase by 50,000 based on the change from the Professional Services line?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the corresponding control totals on the other two departments' budgets would go down by the 40 and the 10.
Page 10? Page 11?
Going back to page 10, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Under the O and E for grant writer, is that just decimennial, or?
Yes.
Decimennial contract?
And the reason it's increased is because last year, under budget constraints, I cut them to six months.
Back to page 11, any questions?
Who, Council President, who is the affirmative action person?
The person first listed on that page.
So, then that would be 126 for one person?
Correct.
Okay. And how do, is there reports that go out from the work that's done as affirmative action?
The affirmative action officer is supposed to review each of the, of the contracts and report to the mayor's office.
And, and so when we have a contract, we want to make sure that the affirmative action initiatives are being met, and so?
Well, there's a, there's a whole checklist that the state gives us, that's supposed to be checked off, and we're making some control and process changes in that area to make sure that by the end of this year, we have a very specific, I'm actually working with the city attorney's office, to make sure that we have a very specific checklist before an item actually goes on the agenda. And then there's a supplemental checklist that we have to use before the contract is actually executed, because there are certain things that the contractors can't provide to us until after their resolution is approved. That goes on the supplemental checklist prior to signature.
And, and all through the duration, to make sure that they're meeting the objectives?
Correct, there's reports that they have to submit. This is another, well, I won't go there. One of the things that the state said to us when they came in was, use state contracts and co-ops, because the state contract, the state actually does all the compliance- and co-ops, because the state contract, the state actually does all the compliance on those contracts, and so does the co-op.
People who are approved under the state?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
That presents other issues from an affirmative action standpoint, because you can often get WMB people, corporations, onto either the state contract or the co-op, because many of the WMB-certified companies are actually on New Jersey Transit, DOT, and the Port Authority's list, and they're so busy, you can't get them on smaller jobs in the municipality.
But, to that point, if they are approved?
Mm-hmm.
Then they, if, if, if we work to get those people approved, those contractors approved under those lists, then they are, then that, then they have met those objectives?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can piggyback those lists.
Right.
The issue doesn't come with identifying them. The issue comes when you hire ABC Company to do your paving program, you put a 20% set aside in the contract, and they go to the WMB-certified businesses, and they can't get them to do the job because they're out at Newark Airport, working 12 months out of the year.
And that's why you, that's why I was saying, going back.
Yeah.
Would you work to make sure they go to?
Exactly.
Any other questions on page 11?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So, you know, my question would basically be, Mr. Hartwick, you know this, under office material supplies, previously, you pretty much spent what you asked for, but in 2018 you didn't.
Because most of it came out of my budget.
Okay. And this year, your, it's not going to come out of your budget or?
Well, I think that the reason this 1,500 is there is because it's almost all spent already.
And, and the dues and publication, what caused them to go up so much?
This is also where you pay for National League of Cities, the mayor's conference, your membership in the League of Municipalities. So, all that got consolidated to this line, which is why it's now 7,200.
So, all of it will come?
Instead of being in spread, and some of it was spread into the administrator's office, some of it was in the mayor's office.
Right. So, all dues and publication for the city are coming here now?
Right.
Okay.
Except the clerk's office, they still have their own.
Okay.
And the city council.
And what are the rentals and leases for?
So, every once in a while, we have to rent a stage or something else for one of the events, tables and chairs, most of that, because it's for specific mayoral events.
Gotcha.
As opposed to community service events.
Any other questions, page 13?
So, you speak?
If I may?
Go ahead.
All right. I had a question about the training. I see over the last couple of years, the training hasn't been spent.
I think you have new members.
All right.
On the ABC, and you're probably going to have a couple more.
Okay.
And there's required training for new ABC members.
All right, thank you.
Going right down the lines, Hartwick.
Mm-hmm.
Special events, there were none, so I would assume that those would normally be to educate the community, there were none, but we still want to fund that? The 350?
Yeah. I mean, just so you know, the way I treat these is the individual sub-accounts aren't the control, so if I end up? If I end up short on employee training, I may move that 350 into employee training.
So, that means that the control is 15, because I think the biggest is the professional services, we're changing the professional services, that's the biggest increase.
That's a tough one to pinpoint. If you look back historically, you know, last year, they didn't spend a lot, but a couple of years ago, they spent practically the whole 10. And I think because of some of the things that are going on with redevelopment?
Gotcha.
And the movement of licenses, we're probably going to need the lawyer to do some extra work.
We're going to skip to page 19. Skip to page 21.
Mr. Hartwick?
Yes, ma'am.
Our insurance, so we're constantly reviewing our insurance to ensure that we're being as efficient as possible with the way we're doing, whether self-insured or whether we need to be, you know?
I think I promised the council that I would give you a primer on our insurance, and I'm happy to do that. What, the way the insurance has been set up is that we have a self-insured retention on our general liability and casualty, the self-insured retention is currently $500,000. And then we are insured at varying levels of excess above that. The first level is $10 million. We haven't, luckily, had a $10 million claim in decades. But we have the potential, with the one case that we briefed the council on, of hitting that, and that is under an old policy, the likes of which I can't understand. It was a $500,000 self-insured retention with a $2 million excess above it, that's it. There was no tertiary excess policy or anything else. So, our coverages and what we call our coverage towers are much better now with the PE GIF.
Right.
We review, I review them every year before renewal, and I sit down with the broker and the risk manager and the underwriter, and we look over our expenses and our losses and our outstanding reserves for the year before we decide on whether or not to adjust the self-insured retention or increase the liability.
And where we are as an agency in terms of all our trainings that give us credits and all of that, we're, we've completed all of those that?
They're actually going to an automated system for the training, so now, when we go online to do a training, they know about it immediately.
Okay.
And they keep track of that and send quarterly reports to me.
Okay. Thank you. So, and this is, wait, is our work in this comp insurance is 22?
Right. So, the workers' comp is also placed through the GIF.
Okay.
Workers' comp has a $650,000 deductible per case.
Per case?
Per case.
Mm-hmm.
So, we manage the workers' comp pretty closely. We have a whole reporting system in place. It involves each department, there's a designated person to record any injury that may have occurred during work. The TPA is immediately notified, the GIF is immediately notified, they're immediately referred to the healthcare provider for evaluation, and then we get a report, and that whole system with the healthcare provider has been automated.
And again, a preventive? And Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Tell us, we haven't heard a lot about prescriptions lately, so I'm hoping that means that you, we are kind of at the status, no surprises or anything, that we're managing everything?
So, I just want to point this out, if you go back to 2015, you were appropriating $2 million.
Mm-hmm.
You spent $1,006,000.
Mm-hmm.
And that number then goes down to $1,006,000, and you spent $1,003,000.
Mm-hmm.
Then $1,004,000, and you spent $1,003,000.
Mm-hmm.
Then we're down to $1,003,000, and we spent $1,001,000.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're budgeting at $1,003,000, and I expect that that'll come under $1,001,000 this year.
But, and, but we're managing, or that's not an issue, because the issue was the things that come outside of the contractual, and that's the thing that ballooned you or something, so none of that will be?
We fixed all of that.
Gotcha. And, and then?
It's the next line that is the one that killed me.
But?
Because it's actually more people.
Right.
So, over time, what happens is you end up with more people on the retiree side than you end up on the active side.
Mm-hmm.
And, so that number actually grows as people live longer.
Right. And there's, what, the one where we're not refunding it, is that anywhere near, the reimbursement for the retirees, that's no longer?
If you look under, it's part of count 541.
Okay, gotcha. And this was?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's actually count 549. It's specifically spelled out.
Okay, so I'll wait till we get there, okay. So, this appropriation has nothing to do with the contribution, this is?
No, this appropriation is required because last year, we spent that amount. The fact that we've changed the program and don't have to spend that, we should actually see a number substantially less under the 280 next year.
Mm-hmm.
But because it didn't get put in until mid-year, I have to account for it in the budget.
Up until that, and what I'm asking you, so I'll give you an example of like an athlete, that's a, that comes right, that's something that the employee pays for, and then it goes to pay for that?
Correct.
This right here is not that type of, this is just something that was negotiated and?
Yeah, the statute required you, when you were in state health benefits program, and you had retirees who got health benefits, it required you either to hire a third-party company to do the Medicare reimbursement or to do it yourself. But when you come out of the state health benefits plan, since 2010, you have the option of not doing that, because it's not required if you're not in the state health benefits plan. We didn't do it until this year, and I was looking at this last year as a cost savings, and I recommended that we follow the 2010 amendment.
And if we go back into the state health?
We'll have to add this back.
We have to reallocate. Gotcha. And, and we don't have to bring one third, no, because we're not in there, gotcha, okay.
Any other questions on page 25? Page 27.
Council President, a second. Going back to the unemployment compensation?
Mm-hmm.
So, the numbers have decreased because those were amounts that were delinquent. Now, is it just 50,000 a year? Or was this, what's this 50,000, is this the, page 26, the unemployment compensation?
Page 26.
So, this number is based on your claims. So, if people file unemployment claims, the number goes up if they?
No, no, just going back. So, the reason, it was so big before is because we had back pay, now that we're all, we're all caught up?
Correct.
And this is just current? We have no more back?
That's right.
This is all current, that's what?
Yeah, those 15, 16, and 14 numbers were you owed from prior years.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Hartwick, any closing comments?
We will be presenting to you, we continue to look to trim costs in a variety of areas, and we're going to be some, presenting to you some fairly cutting-edge programs within the next few months. We're taking a very serious look at our energy costs.
Mm-hmm.
And in addition to the energy costs, you'll have the new fuel program. Between those two things, by next year, we, if we implement them, it appears as though we'll have additional savings of close to a half a million dollars. So, and we'll continue to look at the insurance numbers, because it's, the insurance numbers are the third-largest piece of your budget.
Yeah.
After salary, wages, and pension costs.
Okay. CBAC, are you guys ready, or you need another minute or two?
A minute.
Okay. And you can just come right over here to this desk over here, when you're ready. Thank you.
Yes, Chris, some questions from my fellow board members. The chief communications officer, I'm on page five, what does he actually do?
Prepares all statements to the press.
Council President, I'm sorry, Mr. Hartwick, just a point, just say a name so people know who you are.
Douglas Burress, speaking for the CBAC.
Thank you.
Prepares all statements to the press, responds to all press inquiries, updates and maintains the website, is our liaison to Channel 35, posts all notices. All communications that come out of the mayor's office or the business administrator's office or any department run through the communications office. That includes flyers, email blasts, and he maintains the SWIFT REACH blast system. That includes flyers, email blasts, and he maintains the SWF reach blast system, which we use to communicate with residents.
So, he is responsible for those annoying robocalls?
That's correct.
Thank you.
They're annoying when you get them and they're a pain when you don't.
When you don't, that's it.
I got three of the same ones within a seven-minute period one day. Same robocall repeated. Okay, on the affirmative action officer, which is a, an auxiliary duty of the confidential aide. You were saying that the state pretty much handles the affirmative action review?
The state monitors compliance, so they have an office of compliance in the EEO office of the department. What I was saying was that if you use a state contract, then you don't have to worry about compliance because in order to get an approved, be an approved state contractor, the state's division of treasury monitors compliance with those provisions. Otherwise, you get kicked off the state contract list.
I see. Okay, is there any plan to split the affirmative action officer duties from the mayor's confidential aide?
No.
We go down here on page five, the personnel officer, employee benefits officer. I understand she has left the employee of the city?
Correct.
Okay, what will be happening with her salary from here on?
I'm not sure I can answer that at this point in time. I'm not, I don't, the answer is I don't know. Her departure occurred last week. And I've not had an opportunity, we had two weeks' notice. So, I haven't had yet an opportunity to sit with the mayor to determine how we're going to deal with that.
Thank you. I'm on page twenty-three. Office materials and supplies, I see they've gone from zero, 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 zero up to nine hundred thousand dollars. I take it that's a consolidation or a movement from somewhere else?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Twenty-three. Third item down.
I'm lost.
Third one, page twenty-three.
Give me the page number again from the left lower right corner.
I read two-three.
Or number forty-three, if you look at the top.
Ah, forty-three, got it. So, this is a consolidation from the entire city. Prior to two thousand and seventeen, or from two thousand and seventeen backwards, this number was spread out among all different departments and divisions. And as part of better controls and best practices, it was consolidated into this line item under the administrative services division so that we could have better control of what was ordered and purchased.
Thank you. Council President, that's all from the CBAC on this one.
Thank you. Are we going to move to tab three, the clerk's office? If we can take a five-minute recess, I would appreciate it.
We had talked about the CBAC moving over there, and I told you I chose.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Oh, James. Okay. Well, you know, it's just. Yeah, and we're working, and I was trying to avoid us having you spend money, that's why I chose that bill.
Either building, I'm going to have to have somebody there for me, if I'm upstairs, I have to.
No, the police there, we never had actual staff as a police there, we just always used to. All right, I mean, the reason we did it, we, the reason we picked that building is because so you wouldn't have to incur.
Public forms, I had to have.
All right, here we go.
I had to have one portion.
Ring the bell.
The problem is.
Oh, yeah. What tab is your water?
Tab thirteen, maybe? Yeah, thirteen.
Ring it, brother, ring it.
Can you hit the bell?
All right. Tell him five minutes.
Oh, whatever. Oh, no, she's standing right there. Jackson, right there, we all here.
I thought I told you that night when I was on the phone. All right, I'll go back. All right, you just write it and send it to me, go back.
Okay, we have a change, we're going to go to tab thirteen, the water utility.
Mr. B, any open statements regarding the water?
So. Good evening.
Good evening.
Again. As you know, the water utility is addressing a number of issues. I think I told you the other night, we have dealt with six major emergencies within the last two weeks. Including three water main breaks and three sinkholes the size that could swallow a car. Each of the sinkholes was caused by a broken stormwater pipe. So, a lot of the work that we have to do on the waterside is going to be in the capital budget. In each of those instances, we have instituted a protocol for, to follow the emergency contracting provisions. And we will come back to the council with the appropriate documentation and declaration resolutions. But that's just to give you an idea of the sort of day-to-day operational issues. We now have two people who will be working full-time. So, this budget is a little bit out of date. And I'll have to make some changes and amendments, but I need to meet with Ms. Megan in order to address some of that. And so, I apologize that the budget that you have before you won't be the one that I hope will be voted on. The, the issues in water are many and varied. And we can start with the fact that the Water Quality Control Act of two thousand and four required us to do electronic inventory of a variety of our equipment. And so, a lot of the time, and energy of the employees assigned to the utility now is actually, over the last several weeks, they've been out marking, photographing, and cataloging all of the water and sewer utility infrastructure. And by that, I mean all the fire hydrants, all the catch basins, all the manhole covers, all the valves, all the equipment down at the Beach Street Station, all the equipment in the abandoned Beach Street Station, all of the equipment and lines and valves up to the Walker Road tank, up to and out through each of the wellhouses. And finally, we will get to cataloging the length of the transmission pipe that runs through three, five municipalities. It's a big job, but we're making great progress. In addition to that, they have to respond, obviously, to the day-to-day issues that come up in water. We're also in shut-off season, so they're spending their time updating records and improving some of the record-keeping with SUEZ. And so, you're going to see some significant changes. We will be presenting to you at some point, we believe in July, possibly August, a request for authorization to file an H-two loan application to fund the AMP and a variety of capital improvements that have been identified as priorities by the Department of Environmental Protection and our own engineers. So, in the water sewer operating S and W, we have an account clerk salary.
Are you, you finished with your summary?
Yes.
Just before you go, I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions regarding your summary.
Sure.
Are we at the point of, or how far away are we from self-liquidating, this being a?
We're still self-liquidating. We were self-liquidating, we got self-liquidating back in, in, we were not self-liquidating in seventeen, we got back to self-liquidating in eighteen and we'll stay self-liquidating.
Okay, so now we're on the right track, so. And I think sometimes people think of what, or could be considered like a place of revenue that could offset other causes, other costs sometimes. Are we there or we're still, because of our infrastructure, we still have so far to go?
No, I think that the next step is to get the operations and collections to a position where any surplus that you generate can feed your capital improvement program in water.
Okay.
Because you have a number of issues that come up in a system that's over a hundred and fifty years old. You know, I, I think I told this story when we were in closed session, we had the pipe break, we had the main break on Crane Street. We had, it happened at four o'clock in the morning, we had water shooting up eighteen feet in the air. We shut off the valves, we repaired the main, we put the road back in order. And fifteen minutes later, we had a main break on Crane Street, fifteen feet from where the other main break was.
Water will find a way.
And then that happened a third time on the same street. So, at that point, we decided, okay, we'll repair this, but we're going to replace the whole line.
And the contract, are we?
So, we have actually audited over the last two weeks, the SUEZ contract. And we have a meeting tomorrow with the, the lead person who you've all met, Mr. Riott, to discuss with him the results of that audit. We found some non-compliance that we're addressing on a day-to-day basis and so I think tomorrow will be an important meeting.
Thank you.
So, some of these salaries and names will change, but we'll still stay within our self-liquidating confines. And. Sure.
So, now that you have fully staffing the water, so you said you hired two new people, right?
Yeah.
So, the stipend will go away?
That stipend has already been transferred.
So, that's gone?
Right.
Transferred where?
I just put it back into the water budget and if I need to, I may need to do a stipend on the record-keeping side because our record-keeping with regard to accounts needs to be redone. So, and, and you probably all think that that's pretty simple, so let me just explain why it's not.
A record keeper?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
So, what we have found is that there is a significant gap in coordination between SUEZ and our public works and building departments when a water account is closed out by virtue of a sale of a piece of property and a new account is opened up. So, we're addressing that now. And a lot of the administrative work that is associated with the proper running of the water utility, even though you have a contract with an external operator, the owner of that facility, the city, still has to have those records for billing and tax purposes and everything else. And so, our records need first an audit, just like we audited the contract. And then after the audit identifies the problems, a plan to fix them. So, I don't want the ten thousand to go away because I'm going to need some clerical support on rebuilding the documentation process.
Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
To follow up on Councilwoman Lee, I think I just heard her say that you added two more people to this department.
Yeah, so what I did is I swapped one out.
Don't just tell me, let's go to the labor one, what are the positions, so you have a labor one account clerk and water service manager. What are the, are those there, those remain there, what's the fourth thing?
So, the laborer one actually goes, that title went with the person.
Okay, so what?
And is replaced by a laborer one.
Okay.
A new hire. The account clerk remains the account clerk. And at some point, I'll address those work duties and how that's being accounted for. The water services manager, we've moved in a water supervisor from public works.
So, there's no more water service manager?
Correct.
It's water service supervisor, okay.
It's a water supervisor. And we were very careful with the title selection because certain titles require licenses. And that salary that he had in public works moved over with him.
But just want to say this, so approximately, what is that salary? But just want to say this, so approximately, what is that salary for the Supervisor?
It's in the 60s. It's in the 60s.
In the 60s?
I can tell you...
And the Labor One salary remains the same?
Correct.
Okay.
69, 431.
69. And then the, what's the fourth position? And that's the admin person you just said?
Correct.
So it'll be another Account Clerk, probably?
It'll be part of an Account Clerk.
And will it be interpersonal person, or it's gonna be a stipend, or this will be a...
Probably, I don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay. And so, and what would be the amount for the Account Clerk that you would put, that's what the 10...
If I put half the salary of an Account Clerk in there, I would be fine.
So, okay, like 22 something?
Right.
Okay. We're gonna start on page 171. Seeing that we had a lot of questions already with 171, any other questions on 171? We're gonna skip to 173.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Jackson?
I'd just like a description of the accounting fees, or at least, at last expenditure in 2018 was about $6,800. And now, it's requesting $40,000.
So, I'm gonna leave the $40,000 request because in the past, we have brought in an outside-city consultant to help us with rate studies. And I can tell you already that in this year, not only will we need to look at the rate studies again, but I need to bring in, on a limited engagement, an audit, an auditor to audit the accounts, do some random testing, and give us some data.
Thank you.
Page 174.
175.
One second, if I may. I'm just a little slow in the draw. Professional Services, please.
174?
Yes, please, on 174.
Okay.
It's mostly engineering costs.
All right.
And I kinda left this number alone, even though, because typically, your engineering fees in a utility should be associated primarily with capital projects. Here, it's a little different because we have some permits to apply for to fix the Glen Avenue Bridge situation. So, I didn't change the number because I think that between that and the bid specifications that need to be done for the new meter program, we're probably gonna run around that same number.
Now, as you mentioned, well, the infrastructure, just thinking of the instance where we had the, you know, the emergency water main break.
Ultimately, that's a capital improvement. And although we'll authorize it as an emergency, at some point, we'll do a capital ordinance.
So our expectation is that we're gonna continue to have those until they're all fixed.
Yeah. So if you look at, at the infrastructure repair and maintenance line?
Yes.
Right? That, that line should be used primarily for those types of instances. And I think that what you're gonna see over the course of time is that line's gonna go up.
Okay.
Right? And then, as the year progresses, if those repair and maintenance items are actually capital repair and fixes, we'll take them towards the end of the year and push them into a bond ordinance and refund back to the infrastructure and repair account whatever we spent.
All right. Thank you. How are these affected by the, these numbers affected by the construction, the road reconstruction that we're doing?
So, if you remember during the Public Works discussion, there were four roads that we took and put at the back, at the end of the process. Because when we had National Water come out and do the analysis of the underground water infrastructure, they identified those four instances where something was going to need to be addressed. So we sequence them at the end of that. When we have exactly the engineering specs as to what has to be done, we'll come forward with a funding mechanism for that independently.
So, at this point, we're not clear exactly how that number...
I don't know what that's gonna cost yet.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Council...
Council President?
Yep.
Can, where can I just get a bird's-eye view of, in the front of the 2018 revenue for...
Go to page 176.
So that was, that, that was the revenue or the amounts?
It's a self-liquidating utility.
Right. So this is everything, and so, and your request is basically asking what came in for the last year to kinda go back and how?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think this number can, I think this number can grow based on just the last five weeks of looking at things. If you improve your collection rate by virtue of putting in, you know, new meters and you fix leaks, that number, that revenues, the revenue side of your budget's gonna grow dramatically.
And so, this revenue, and is there a line that shows a delinquent amount?
No, not on here.
And the revenue is, is less the delinquent amount? The link, the delinquent amount is not factor in, but we do know...
We have an aged receivable list. I know what the, what the delinquency is.
And approximately, what is that about?
Approximately $3.5 million.
Okay. And is this, you know how, I guess the state quote-unquote looks at your collection rate for, for taxes? Do they do the same thing in, for water and everything?
Yeah. So they're actually much more liberal in dealing with older utilities. So, if, if, if your loss rate, in other words, water that's unaccounted for exceeds 50%, then they come down on you hard. If your loss rate is somewhere between 40 and 30, and you're a 150-year-old system, they want you mindful of it, but they're not gonna hammer you over it. Well, our loss rate is, in that we're not gonna hammer you over it, but for a system this size, fixing that loss rate has dramatic changes to your revenue stream.
And have we worked out, so, we have a ongoing conversation with the Board of Bid. And is that 3.5 considered in that amount?
That amount is in the 3.5.
And are we, are we still working that out?
And not to leave anybody out, if you're out there and you're listening. If you have water and you don't have a meter, we'll be coming for you. Because there's a lot of buildings that don't have meters.
And just, and how could that have happened?
It's just a legacy, I call it a legacy problem. It develops over decades. Sometimes, a building changes use or ownership and no new water meters put in.
So they're using water not paying for it?
Yeah.
Wow.
And then you have public buildings that aren't metered at all. So you have no ability to quantify or measure how much water's being used in those buildings.
Or if there's a leak in the building?
Correct.
So even the bills that we're sitting in?
That's right. So all of those problems are being addressed and, and will be, over the next two years, fixed.
Okay. Thank you. Back to page 175. And we're just on 176.
Those are just copies of...
That's just the audit trail for the account.
Yep.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Mr., at some point, I mean, there's a lot that, we, our city, because of us having a reservoir and everything, we have a potential to do so much more. Is there a forecasted plan to kinda use our resources more efficiently?
So, I'll give you the, I'll give you all the 50,000-foot look. You have what amounts to a $15 million business within the city's accounting budget. That $15 million business is your water and sewer utility. If you meter all the buildings that aren't metered, you upgrade the meters, you fix the leaks, you will cut your loss of water from where it's at approximately 40%, probably down to 15 to 10. Assuming that you bill for that water and collect it, you're gonna increase your revenues by 3.5 to $4 million a year. The plan that we're laying out and what we've highlighted for you at a high level is designed to stabilize your system so that you can update it. And by stabilize it, what I mean is getting it to the point where you're not constantly having to deal with things on an emergent basis. Part of that is the meter program, it's the leak detection program, it's the measurement program, it's the well rehabilitation, re-drilling, and redundancy project. So that every individual piece of the infrastructure in the water utility has a backup piece. And a lot of work's been done over the years. So now, you're sitting where not only do you have wells that have a capacity that's equal to the capacity in the well field that was measured in the 60s, you have a reservoir that you're not using as a water source, which you could potentially reinstate, and you have built out two interconnections as forms of redundancy, the East Orange Interconnection and the American Water Interconnection. And you have a healthy Walker Road storage tank that we're replacing the gate valves on yesterday and today. So now, we'll be able to measure how much water's there without taking a stick up the mountain and sticking it in the well. So, that infrastructure, well, let's just focus on that. If today, you tried to go out and buy the 16.2 miles of easements that you would need to lay that transmission pipe, or the property to put a 5 million gallon storage tank, the reservoir, the well fields, and the wellhouses, the property interests alone are worth in excess of $200 million. So, getting this 10 to $15 million business that has $200 million in assets straightened out gives the city a lot of options financially. And that's the goal.
Thank you.
Okay. So, will that be your closing remarks right there, or you wanna give us...
That's it.
That's it. Thank you. CVA C, any questions, or you guys quite ready enough?
I'm in it.
Okay. Awesome.
Chris, somebody's in a battle right now, the city is... The Councilwoman takes...
You wanna know the score?
At some point, the summary, I'm just, I'm just curious to see why they push back.
So actually, that was the last week.
It's gonna be a bad before game all night.
The whole thing was falling apart because they didn't get out in front of it in terms of public message.
So it's one of those terms, did we ever get to attorney for medicine? So he, did he work on that stuff?
He knows about it.
Everybody does.
It's too late.
Did you go to the water program? Did you know about the work? Did you know about the work program?
It did.
Finally, we just got in the mail. You ready?
I am ready, ma'am.
Hey, okay. State your name for the record and this keep...
It hasn't changed since last time. Douglas Burris, appearing for the CVA C. I find more aggravation among my fellow taxpayers and tech-water-meter payers over this than anything else. First off, you said that there's a problem when property changes hands, that the water meters are not updated? No. What should happen is that on the date of closing, or the day before, a call goes into the tax collector's office to get a final reading on the meter for the owner who is selling. And this is your typical residential sale. The tax office should then communicate to SUEZ that that account is closed. And typically, the owner of the property, the new owner, would call up the tax office and say, "I'm the new owner, please open my water account." Unfortunately, what we have discovered is that many of the homes are changing hands, but not to people who are actually going to live in them. And they don't really have an interest in having the new account turned on. If they're going to do renovations, they should be calling the tax office and saying, "I'm gonna be doing renovations based upon the application I filed with the Building Department, and I need a construction meter installed." That whole process needs to be revamped. I would hope that is in progress. It is. Because the tax meter, or the tax collector and the water bill people knew exactly where to find me when I moved into this town. They still know where you are. Question on the, oh, another question. Water used in firefighting, does that just count as water that disappears? Yeah. Basically, I mean, it's measured. So, we typically know, based on the pressure and how long they run it, how much water's going there. We don't obviously stop to put a meter on when we're going to fight a fire. But we can tell by length and by pressure, the length of time and pressure, approximately how much water is used. Okay. On page 175, where we have the water sewer utility bond principal and the water sewer utility bond interest, can you explain how that works? Sure. There are outstanding water sewer utility bonds that have paid for a variety of capital improvements within the system. The interest on those outstanding bonds on an annual basis is approximately $720,900. And the principal retirement for the fiscal year 2019 is $1,390,000. I see. And then if you scroll down to the next line where it says NJEIT bonds? there are certain bonds that are outstanding that were funded with the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust and the principal retirement and a portion of the interest because in that program, you don't have to pay interest on the total amount. For this year, we'll be retiring and paying interest on approximately $517,000.
And the Beach Street facility, which you said is abandoned or closed?
Well, one building, which is the old Beach Street Treatment Plant, is still there, it's not in use. The new building is right next to it.
And they're treating the water there?
Yes.
That concludes my questions from the CBAC. Council President?
Thank you, sir.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams?
Mr. Hartwick, in light of all the issues with water infrastructure, particularly in urban towns or towns or infrastructure, probably USY, are there major grants or any funding out there to supplement?
So, the answer is yes.
Okay.
However-
Okay.
Remember, we came to you for authorization to do the AMT plan? The asset management plan? You're not, you can't qualify for federal grants that are available without that in place and approved by your local DEP.
Okay, so that's what we-
So it's a precursor to being able to comply.
Okay, gotcha.
So those two resolutions that we passed at that last meeting was-
Very important.
And very important to get into that step?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. BA, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. BA.
And that's tab number three, right? Tab three. Tap page 29.
You're doing tab three or four? You're doing a council two voice?
Okay.
No, because I'm just, okay. So which one are you doing first? No, I'm asking you. Because you gave a supplement to yours, correct? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to-
You want to just go over yours first while we get this up?
You want it?
Okay.
You gonna go over? And there's a supplement for the city council as well?
So, city council's budget.
So you want to give us an opening statement or you just want to get right to it?
Sure. Good evening, council members. BA Hartwick, City Attorney Montillas-
If you can introduce yourself for everyone?
Chris?
And the Orange Community. I have with me today Lisette Sanchez, Jamila Daniel, the intern, and my staff will soon be joining us. So, it's a pleasure to be your clerk. I've been here for four years, one month, and eight days. So first, we're going to just go over the council's budget, and then we'll pull up our presentation. Actually, it's up. So how about we just get right into it?
So we're doing city clerk?
So I've given everybody a copy of my presentation. So, tonight, the agenda consists of, I'm going to go over strategic areas. I'm not going to go over it in detail because you have all the written words. Give you our mission statement, who we serve, our duties, accomplishments, goals, demonstrate the need for more storage space, followed by our proposed budget presentation. What are our areas of strategic, what are our strategic areas? Operational excellence and efficiency, legal compliance so that we comply with all state, federal, and county laws, customer service, and civic engagement. What is our mission? Basically, our mission is to serve, in one sentence. Who are our customers? The public, city elected officials, city departments and staff, candidates, voters in the city, county government, the business community, and the community-based organization. What is our vision? Our vision is to maintain a high level of excellence, provide consistent service to our customers, and to meet the challenges of tomorrow through our expertise, innovation, and cooperative partnerships. We strive to set the bar for excellent customer service through innovative, through innovation, expertise, and cooperative spirit. What do we do in the office of the city clerk? We're going to briefly go through it real quick because we know we want to go home.
Game six.
Municipal election officer, we handle aspects of the elections for the city. The administration of the oath of office. For example, we give the oath of office for new committee members coming on, coming into the city. Custodian of records. We have records that the city departments give us, such as contracts. And we keep those for departments that provide that information to us. We're responsible for the publishing of legal notices, such as ordinances, public hearings, special hearings, and committee hearings. We do legislative services. We do mid-preparation and archiving. We have public records requests. These requests are by residents and others for public records, but the process starts in the clerk's office. Official, we have the official custodian of the city seal, which is your corporate seal. We have special projects for the municipal council.
What are our accomplishments? The first accomplishment is the council website. I don't know if you guys visit the website? Okay, we'll skip that. But the council website, so that's basically Lisette's responsibility, so I'll let her speak briefly on that.
The council's website?
Yeah.
The council's website, we send- we send information to the website, the notices. We update it with the boards and commissions.
We have all minutes on the website, all the agendas on the website, any public notices on the website, and there's a calendar with all the boards for the city and every event that the city has that comes through the office. So it's a comprehensive webs, it's a comprehensive calendar, forms and documents.
Ms. Lanier, put a room right there on the calendar. Can you just see if it can be directed like, so right now, the way you get stuff is if you put it on there and you send it to the administrator, but there's not a way for people to email you and, if there can be something that people can request to go on the calendar? You know what I'm saying? For the community, so we can, because that seems to be more of a robust calendar. But if we can just get, you know. And so, and I guess that's what we can prob, instead of us getting our, our, da-da-da, our weekly events, we should probably kind of go here. And do we know if we can sync this with the Google Calendar? Can you see? Ask that as well?
Storage engine. We started the scanning process in 2016. We scanned everything. Now we're at the final phase of the scanning. We're doing the commission minutes from 1880 to 1966. So we have everything digitized, and when the BA asks the clerk's office to do some researches like this, we're not going through paper documents, we can just go on the computer and research. Granicus. We've been trying to implement this agenda software program. All the city departments are trained, but we're, we can't move forward. I'll move right on.
Don't move on, because Mr. BA, could y'all get a hard date for that?
We had a hard date. The date comes and goes, so.
And it can't work, it has to work at 100%, it can't work 50? Like if you just, if we just did all our part and then everybody catches up, that's not effective?
No, but we're still trying. We have new mics and recorder, and we've created a new filing system in the office of the city clerk. Oh, future goals. Like I just said, to implement Granicus, we want to develop a citywide records management program. We would like to train all city employees on filing, create a citywide storage. We'd like to start doing PSAs for election, election process, and also do PSAs to encourage citizens to vote and register though. This is examples of our storage. We have no storage. It's really kind of bad.
Ms. Lanier, did you put those shells in there? Were they always there? The shells that are back there?
Yes, yes.
They were always, oh, so it's just a little bit clean, you couldn't notice it before?
And then the last thing is our vault, where we keep our permanent historic records. And then in summary, we strive to provide service in an open and transparent manner by building cooperative partnerships, strong working relationships, and identifying opportunities to extend and improve the service that we provide. These goals will assist us in meeting the needs of our diverse community and customer base. So now, if you go to the actual budget worksheets, you can go to the book or you can go to the one that I prepared with, like the old way you used to get it. It's up to you whichever way you want to go. Council President, you want to go by your pages?
I'd rather stick to the book, keep it simple.
Go ahead. Are you on the couns, are we on the clerks?
No, page 29, that's what I see. The first, um-
I think it's page 33?
29 is the city council.
29, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
So do you want to go over the councils first and then the clerks?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's go to the council. Let's go right, keep it flowing, like this.
So page 29, council-
Yeah, page 29, council. So you finished with your presentation and your opening statement, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Councilmembers, any questions on page 29?
So page 29, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
It's LRO, it's not vacant, it's reallocated, so that word is kind of misleading.
Right. It should be, I don't know how you want to do it, but we know that it's a contract-
It's professional services, right.
We're going to skip to page 31. Any questions, council members?
Yes. On professional services, we passed two contracts and the total is 110. Otuli is $40,000, and the budget consultant is $70,000, which is a total of 110. So that would be an increase.
Under 90?
Yes.
So we need to go up 20,000? We need to go up 20,000. And where are, where are attorney fees?
You know what?
Are they, what, they're here in professional services, right? They would be?
They should be, so we need to add it there.
And just, I know the pending case that we had is over, but I don't believe all the bills are submitted, Council President, and we still have the final part, the proof hearings. And I just actually reached out and asked and asked what the total probably for everything would be, and it was approximately 20,000. And that was outstanding bills plus the proof hearings and everything.
So this number is going to go to like 130? Is that what, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Page 32?
And contractuals like Granicus and all of that?
Yes.
Page 33?
Could I ask a question?
Yes, Councilwoman, you say?
To your two, uh, Kirk, weren't we supposed to be getting monthly, quarterly expense reports per council member? What happened to that? The quarterly expense reports per council person?
Last quarter, I don't know where we made it, we had expenses.
No, I'm saying you were supposed to provide a quarterly report by council person and their expenditures. What happened to that report?
I haven't done it.
When are we going to get it?
Do you want it even if there's no change?
No, we're just going to get it quarterly. Because they had changes-
We'll run a report for you, please.
Huh?
We'll run it for next week.
Okay.
It'll be year-to-date.
Yeah, okay, that's good. That way we can sort of look at what we really need versus-
Page 33?
Clerk, if you can speak to this because we're in the council's budget. Under contractual services.
You back from page 32?
Huh? I'm sorry, Council President?
You back from page 32?
Right.
Okay.
Appropriated 4,000 and only spent 1843. Why are we, is, what's under the contractual service 15 that we need $15,000?
One second. Direct development of the website.
Because Granicus is in your budget?
Correct.
Okay. So did we not pay them last year, or?
I think what happened was it was paid out of a different account.
Okay.
Page 33? Skip to page 35.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I have a question. I'm not really sure which page, but when you say council expenditures, are you talking about like the league stuff? Because I, I just need to ask. Because I didn't know we had any type of account.
That's what she meant, yeah. Like trainings and stuff, that's what you meant when we go out.
Yeah, I mean, everything.
Training, anything, whatever that is spent per council person within the budget.
So what I'm asking is, we have a budget?
Well, this is the budget.
It's on training.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, not training. I'm saying for everything else, I usually spend-
There's a line for office supplies, so yes, you can come, you can spend out of that account.
But she's stuck with the training.
No, 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 no.
Remember, we set up last council, our last budget year, X amount of dollars for councilmen. We divided it by seven, and each council person had a certain amount.
Right.
That's the accounting I'm looking for. How much did each council person spend?
Which is for training. It's for training.
It doesn't have to be training, whatever we spent, a council person.
So that's where I'm confused. So, so when it was broken down per council person?
Right.
I know that there's a part for training. What I'm saying is, like, are you saying- I know that there's a part for training. What I'm saying is, like, are you saying that there is an additional part in there for, let's say, copies or stamps or anything like that?
No, 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 no. Like, some councilpeople might do an event and charge X amount of money to the council, to the, to the budget.
Okay, I've never done that. All right.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
So, I was like, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
No, the office and supplies is all in one budget.
Okay.
But I'm saying by councilperson.
Okay.
But we, you have something to counsel on?
And can you ask a question?
No, that's what, Council President, because I just want to clarify. So, the report is gonna be on training, as I understand, because the program is special events. We had did 15,000 dollars a year that was supposed to be, and then we minimized and said, no, and we took that amount back to 1,000. So, and for the special events and stuff like that, it's only 1,000. For training, it's 2,000, or 14,000, and special events is 1,000.
So, that's my problem. Special, what are the special events?
That's not what we did, that's not what we did. I think Madeline understands what I'm looking for. I don't know what the rest of you guys are. She understands what I'm looking for.
Okay, they'll take care of it.
Yeah, they'll take care of it.
Right. Any other questions on page, um... This is 35?
Yeah.
I have a question about the office materials and supplies. I see that last year, it was budgeted for 550, and you spent 4,600, and why is it 15,000?
I'm sorry, what page you want?
On page 35.
35.
Oh, so, this has been changed.
All right.
It was budgeted for 15,000 because we included new furniture for the clerk's office, but the BA said that we can get the furniture out of our capital expense, and the revised thing is now only 3,000.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay.
So, this 15K is reduced to 3,000?
Yes.
Okay.
When are you gonna get the new furniture?
We have to talk to the...
And it's a handout.
We need orders.
Well, we gotta make sure it doesn't get wet.
That's true.
Any other questions on page 35? Page 36?
Printing and binding. Printing and binding, the code of system contract is 16,000 dollars by itself. This budget line went up 670 dollars for the order paper, ordinance and resolution paper, and stationary and cards.
So, what did it increase to?
It's 16, 6, 7, 0.
Let everybody know you did a handout. You have a supplement on the desk.
Yeah.
Everybody might not know it.
It's a supplement on the desk?
Yeah.
With the changes.
I'm just writing them in my book, same thing.
And I believe, um... Advertisement was 18,000, it went down to 15,000.
Yeah, and just out of curiosity, real briefly, Madam Clerk, are you guys talking about papers are disappearing? Are they, what advertising is gonna look like in the future? If there's no more newspapers, is that a conversation you guys are having? Because the papers are disappearing.
On the state level, because they're the one telling us to publish.
No, no, I got that, but are you guys, when you're at your meetings, are they talking about the future of advertising?
No.
No?
And the travel allowance line went from 105 to 300.
Can you please tell me what the contractual services are for?
The contractual services is for... It's for...
Attorney?
Oh, contractual services. Oh, gramacol, storage engine, engine, granicus, and possibly the shredding, if we ever get there.
All right, thank you.
And there's one addition here, professional services. There's a 20,000 dollar increase in professional services. I'm in current litigation now.
Okay, that's for attorney.
Well, you had zero there.
Yeah, I had zero.
So, you just put 20,000 there?
Yes.
That's in addition to the other 40?
The other 25.
No, on this, on the clerk's professional service, there's nothing there.
All right, so that's 40 for the council and 20 for the clerk. That's an additional 60,000 dollars.
No, we already did, you and I, we discussed this already.
The 20.
The 20.
I know, but we didn't discuss the 40.
No.
So, I'm just saying, it's 60 altogether.
Yes.
And what was the...
What page are we on now?
40 was the...
We're on, uh, we're gonna move to 30, page 37.
Professional services. 37, so on page 37, I decreased the election expenses from 50 to 35,000.
And that's because it's the only thing left is a general?
Yes.
And that's not our responsibility or that?
So, 45?
35.
Council members, any other questions? On page 37? Madam Clerk, a closing statement regarding this budget?
Well, it's been a very interesting journey, trials and tribulations, but also very rewarding. I've grown over the last four years, and I look forward to serving you until infinity.
Wow.
Or game six.
All right. Future retiree.
And we gotta thank your staff also for support.
My staff as well.
CBAC, whenever you're ready.
Madam Clerk, thanks to you and your staff for all the support you provide for the, for the council and the citizens of Orange. It's another place where there was, you know, a, a big gap in services, and you've closed that gap very smoothly, and I look forward to asking for your help going forward.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
To the clerk's office, thank you for keeping me on my toes and making sure I'm handing in documents and responding to my text messages, because it's very helpful, you know, just to make sure we, we stay on point. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Council President. Again, Douglas Burris, appearing for the CBAC. City Clerk, Ms. Lanier?
Yes.
Is there a, an accounting published on the council's programs and special events and council training? The reason I'm asking is, we don't want the taxpayers to get confused and think this is just a slush fund.
Repeat your question?
I'm on page 31, where we have programs and special events and council training.
So, $3,000 for program and special events?
And the $14,000. Is there a, an accounting of this? How this money is spent?
Yes, when we do purchase orders, we can run reports on this particular account, what it was spent on, yes.
Council President?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burris.
Okay, so, are we, are we discussing the workshop study? Are we gonna discuss that or we just going to a poll? When we're going to do the budget, the council's work session? 1, 2, 3, make a point, because otherwise, I'll just make a motion to adjourn. At the public end? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Wooton, second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 10:14 PM.